Well, let's get started. If he comes in, he can always catch up.
Okay.
All right, so with that, I will call to order this meeting of the East Hampton Planning Board for Tuesday, September 15th, 2020. All members are appearing remotely, obviously, and just so everyone knows, if anything goes wrong with this meeting and we can't finish it, we will continue the matter until October 6th. So I can do that administratively. Well, it looks like Harry just popped in.
Yep.
Excellent. So if anything goes wrong here and we can't finish the meeting, and you're listening and interested in when the next meeting will be, it would be October 6th. So mark that down on your calendars. First of all, is there anybody here that would like to speak to anything that is not on the agenda? You can either virtually raise your hand on Zoom or raise your physical hand if you're on camera, or I think, Jeff, I always forget, is it star nine if you're calling in?
Yes, I believe so, and I'm going to double check that just for later.
And if anybody can't do any of those things, if you want to just unmute yourself and ask to speak. All right, seeing nothing, we will move along. We do have a set of minutes for the August 11th meeting, which came out not a moment too soon, so that I could review them, since I wasn't at the meeting. I actually had a correction, just because number one says JBT open. Call to order 6:00 PM, JBT by remote participation. I was not there, so that must have been Mr. Zarvis. But other than that, I have nothing I could even add.
So other than that, minor modification, I motion to approve the minutes from August 11th.
I'll second that.
All right, so to approve the August 11th meeting minutes, Mr. Zarvis.
Aye.
Brenda.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
And I will abstain. Moving right along, no A and Rs, so we're on to the continued public hearing for Cynthia Stepler, seeking a special permit and stormwater management permit under section 8.3 and 12.7 of the zoning ordinance and 1276 of the city ordinance for the construction of an 18-year-old family.
You did not ask for public speak.
I did ask for public speak at the beginning. Is there something you want to speak to that's not on the agenda?
What's on the agenda? Yes, I do.
No, for something that's not on the agenda.
No, for something that is on the agenda.
Okay, so when I get to this application, then I'll open it up to public comment after we've heard from the applicant, okay?
Jesse, do you want to?
It's not on the agenda.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wilson said something. I didn't hear what he actually said at that last thing.
You have a public speak, but there's nowhere on the agenda that you say that public can speak after the meeting.
The public hearing process, when I open up the public hearing, we'll hear from the applicant, we'll have questions from board members and comments, and then we'll have a public comment period for members of the public on that application.
Thank you. Next time, it'd be nice if you put it on the agenda.
Okay, that's just sort of the way the public hearing process works. The public's not on the.
Not all the public hearings.
Okay, well, that's how we've done it, but thank you. All right, so as I was saying, we'll reopen the public hearing for Cynthia Stepler. Is there someone here on behalf of the applicant?
I believe there is.
Yep, that pesky mute button. Sorry.
Let me mute one second.
Good evening. Sorry. For the record, Rob Levek from our Levek Associates here on Zoom this evening, representing Cynthia Stepler for the proposed project at 73 Loudville Road. I know that we've had some dialogue to date, and I can, if it pleases the board, I can start in any fashion. I can do a brief overview, if you'd like, and then talk about where we're at and have received some input. So I'd like to kind of discuss some of the input that I've received since the last public hearing, and then go from there and address any items.
That'd be great, Rob. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So I'll share my screen. If I'm allowed to here, let me just go through this. Okay, are you looking at my plans?
No, it looks like a team's setup.
Okay. How about now?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so I'll go through the plans briefly. I know that hopefully everybody that was at the last public hearing is here tonight, and if there's anybody new, I guess I can, you know, answer the questions a little bit beyond. But I'll go briefly through the project plans. So existing conditions on the site, as mentioned, the existing single-family home at 73 Loudville for Mrs. Stepler's house, a series of wetland resource areas, notably in the north side of the property, associated with Hanen Brook, which is a perennial stream. Couple isolated wetlands throughout. We're generally staying away from those. We also have test pits throughout the site, existing contours, property boundaries, et cetera, all shown on our existing conditions plan. We're proposing, as mentioned last time, to put a small condo community within the subject property. That condo community would take place within this limit of work here. I had mentioned that there are areas of tree clearing. The white areas that you see are the open fields, and then the hatched areas are areas that we anticipate needing to clear. We have been through the Conservation Commission process, and we have been issued an order of conditions. Actually, I think that I believe they're in the process of preparing the order of conditions, but they did vote to close the meeting and issue the order of conditions with some special conditions, but generally speaking, it's been approved. This is the proposed layout. So we're proposing 18 condo units housed in the existing house here would be one. And as we go around the perimeter of the site, you'll see that we're going in a clockwise motion, and we have duplexes, we'll call them, or two-unit buildings, and then a single unit 16 at the back. We have a proposed roadway that comes in. We're calling it, I think it's, let me see what that says, White Violet Lane, and then Red Trillium Path off of that. So the proposal generally takes place in the flat upland area that we walked during our site visit as requested by the planning board. We have laid out not only the unit locations, but also the limit of work. We've provided approximately 50 stakes. I believe we have stakes also at the centerline of the road and also at the center of each cul-de-sac. So that's been provided. I'm sure the planning board has had an opportunity to take a look at that. That was laid out on 8/24/20, so August 24th of this year. The proposal incorporates water and sewer. We have water and sewer available in Loudville Road. We're planning on gravity-feeding the sewer to the back of the site and then pumping internally, and then having a gravity-fed manhole that runs then into Loudville Road into the existing sanitary manhole out there. We have completed, you know, traffic generation and report that's been provided and reviewed at the last public hearing. We have for you this evening some sample-style units that are based on these footprints, subject to change in some regard, but generally give you an idea. There were some questions, I believe, last time about homeowners' associations and how to handle that, so I think that will obviously be a discussion for tonight. There were also questions, I believe, from one of the members regarding kind of the, how these tie into the neighborhood and what we can do to help balance this with the neighborhood. So I think seeing that, you know, the general unit style tonight will help. And also, I do have Google Earth available on my computer that we can kind of do a little walk down Loudville Road, so to speak, while we're on the Zoom. So I can go through any other details that you'd like. There is obviously a detailed landscape plan and photometric plan that we've provided. We went through that last time. I won't bore you with the details, but generally speaking, you know, we have landscaping throughout the site, supplemental plantings, vegetated buffer along some of the areas where we're a little bit closer to some of the property lines. Again, I had mentioned that there's a lot of natural buffer that will remain both on the property and off property. Approximately 400 linear feet minimum to the properties to the north of Hanen Brook and the neighborhood back there. I know there's a few abutters that had questions and concerns. Anticipate that the site will be minimally visible from Loudville as you're driving up and down Loudville, given the location of the existing structure, which will become incorporated into a condo unit. As you can see, the existing structure is very similar in size and scale to each of the units that we're proposing. So if you look at kind of unit 16, that's a single unit here. Very similar in size to the existing structure that Miss Stepler lives in now. There's a garage here. These have two-car garages, as does this unit and a lot of the units or our single-family homes or other homes on the street, so we can talk about the nature of that as we go forward. As a point of information related to correspondence or a communication we've had with Jack Jacobic. He represents the abutter to the left here. I believe it's Mr., and I apologize if I say that name wrong. Goodness. Oh, man.
Bartiavich?
Bartiavitz or Barti- David Bartiavitz, I believe. So Mr. Bartiavitz had asked a question about, kind of, there's a driveway encroachment here, which we are working with his attorney to resolve. We'll be able to provide him a little bit of information at the same time, and he's probably one of the more affected abutters in the project. We're in the process of working with him and seeing what potential supplemental plantings beyond what we've already provided would be logical and would be advantageous to buffering him. So we're in the process of communicating. I spoke as late as this afternoon with Mr. Jacobic and anticipate continuing to communicate with him prior to the next hearing, at which point we'll have, hopefully, those details of additional landscaping required, provided in that area. So at least to date, we seem to have a nice back-and-forth with Mr. Jacobic and anticipate we'll be able to hopefully quell any of the fears or concerns of the directive abutter there. So that's another thing we've been working on.
Thanks, Rob. Before we get to questions, I think at the last hearing, there was discussion, at least two of the issues for sort of follow-up. One was about tree clearing and tree removal, if there was more details about the actual trees and if there was going to be a tree census. And the second had to do with some of the slope stabilization. Can you speak a little bit about either of those things right now?
Sure, yeah. So the limit of work was staked out in the field, and I anticipated it would be viewed by the planning board, but if it has not, we certainly can make the time available to conduct an additional site visit with the planning board, or if you so choose, at the time of your liking, could go out and take a look. The building footprints have been staked, as well as the limit of work. There's approximately 50 stakes out there that were set, which will illustrate the location of the proposed clearing, so that you can actually see in the field, you know, vegetation along that limit of work that may or may not be able to be saved. And or if there's any questions or concerns, probably would be logical to, you know, try to do another quick site visit, to take a quick look at that. And if there's anything that along that line can be marked and saved, we're certainly more than happy to try to do so. That said, the remaining portion, kind of within the limit of work, obviously, well, I don't want to say, you know, the term clear cut is obviously, sounds like a negative term, but I think it's accurate. The area within the roadway and the proposed footprints obviously can't have trees there. So really, I think the area that we can focus on would be along the perimeter and see if there's any mature vegetation that we can try to salvage and save. And then, you know, in the end, you know, if we're, we have to be a little careful about, you know, under the canopy and, you know, what kind of, you know, root structure we have for any of these mature trees. Ideally, we don't want to be damaging them, so we have to be probably fairly reasonable and practical about what we save and don't save. But I do think there probably is an opportunity, and I think that's the best way to go about it, if it's okay with the board. Potentially subsequent to tonight's meeting, we can set up a site visit.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. I think we did our last site visit on August 10th, and there was sort of minimal staking there. You were there to sort of point us in the general direction, but I think it'd be helpful to go back and see where things actually lay.
Yeah, it should paint a good picture now. You know, it would be good to have me kind of interpret. I can also provide a sketch to the planning board that would have the stake numbers on each. You know, it's a stakeout sheet that will have our plan, and then the stake numbers that correspond to each of the stakes. That would be helpful. Obviously, you know, Chris and others have that technical background. Between Chris and I, or whoever's there, the stakeout sheet will really provide you with a roadmap, so to speak, to find out which stake is which.
All right, I think that makes sense. Thanks, Rob.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, too. I wasn't aware, Rob, I apologize. I wasn't aware that it was staked and ready, so I didn't take any steps to coordinate a visit before this meeting. But I think that's something, at the end of this, let's talk about how we want it to work. And then just for clarification, you know, we're not aware of the discussion that you might be having with the abutter. So as it seems fit, you can explain more of that as we go through the rest of the plans.
Sure, and just to clarify, that has not been directly with the abutter. It's been through Mr. Attorney Jacobic.
Okay.
Been very pleasant conversations, I believe, in general. You know, we're looking to work together so that we can resolve his driveway issue and that also we can, at the same time, provide, and this is something basically an offer on the table for him, if there's any specific, you know, buffering concerns that that family has. You know, it's logical that we try to address those, because in the grand scheme of things, it shouldn't, it won't be that impactful to the project, and it will probably be very impactful to the neighbor. So just to the extent we can help out in that regard, we're planning on doing so.
Rob, have you had any similar communications with any of the other directive abutters?
We have not. We have, Mr. Jacobic had reached out to us, so it wasn't us actually reaching out to the abutter. Certainly happy to communicate with other abutters, but in this particular location, you know, there's really, there's a very significant regulated vegetated buffer along the perimeter of the remainder of the project. So just to give you some perspective, this is the lot we're talking about that Mr. Jacob, Attorney Jacobic, reached out to us. So we're fairly tight to this property line. And I know that there were some questions about how we would be addressing that. So we look to address that not only on our property, but potentially if there's a request, you know, look at, you know, what they would like planted maybe on their side of the line, too, which could be advantageous to them. Beyond that, the perimeter on this side is all buffer zone, which is, this is the inner buffer zone, which is heavily regulated by the Conservation Commission. We have already been approved with an order of conditions, so we cannot go beyond our limit of work here. So this will remain vegetated all in here. This is all vegetated area. In addition, there's an off-site wetland with a buffer zone associated. So there will be, you know, on these, not to say somebody couldn't file. They could potentially file to get around the backside of this, but the practicality of anyone penetrating this existing vegetated buffer here, all the way around the perimeter, is pretty, pretty, pretty much a long shot to get, for somebody to get permitted, and certainly, we're not looking to do that. And then we obviously have the units well away from the stormwater basin along this far side, which is also vegetated. It's a little bit more of a filtered vegetation. It's not quite an impenetrable vegetated buffer, but it's, you know, it's a nice filtered view to a grassed area. And then along the perimeter on the north and on the, I guess we'll call that the west side, there's significant hundreds of feet of existing mature vegetation that will remain, and that is required to remain based on the Wellness Protection Act and the, you know, and obviously, our approval that we received.
Thanks, Rob. Any planning board members have any comments or questions?
Jesse, I was curious how Mr. Levek described maybe some additional information about the design of the units. Do you potentially want to have him go through that and/or the neighborhood information?
I think it'd be helpful if he did that first, and then we can open it up to the public.
Okay, great.
By any chance, are you looking at a condo unit?
No. We're still in the plans.
Wow, I gotta practice more. Let me just try to figure this out here. How about now?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, so just to give you some perspective on what we're showing here. This is a unit with the, essentially, the exact same footprint as you're seeing. Almost, I guess, this side, we'll call it, because we're showing two-car garages for our footprints. But this is essentially the exact same footprint that you're looking at on your plans. This is a project that's similar. Actually, there's another one similar to it in East Hampton, and this one was done in Southwick. This is Depot Square. These are the units that we were talking about. So just to give you some perspective on the massing and the architectural look of it, so this is what we'll call a story and a half. So the general living area, first-floor master, kitchen, sizable living room are all on the first floor. A two-car garage is provided for each unit. They're staggered architecturally, so that they're providing relief along the front and trying to keep the scale of the architecture to a residential scale. You'll see the gables, you know, the gabled dormer in front, the porches, the columns, et cetera. This is a particular choice of trim and colors, so this is not necessarily what I would expect would necessarily be chosen by the developer. And I would ideally like to see at least a few color types with 18 units. It wouldn't be something where we would want to see one single color. I've seen that before. To me, it looks more institutional. We also don't want 15 of them, you know. So I think we'll probably, you know, choose a color palette that works and complements each other. I would expect that to be something in the way of, you know, three general color palettes. To give you a little bit more perspective, this is a, you know, a little blow-up on the right side, you know, landscaping out front, similar to that of a single-family home. Obviously, the landscaping surrounding the site. And just to give you some perspective, on these particular units, where it's more of a saltbox roof, in the back corners, when I go back to my site plan, we'll just note that this is the porch here. This is generally what this looks like, so they have an opportunity in each of these units for a covered porch. This is a little bump out for the, I think that's like in the dining area. So the kitchen is in the front, dining area, living area with the porch out back with the, we'll call it the first-floor master and bathroom on the far side of what you're looking at currently. Does that make sense so far?
Yeah, but Rob, so just, can you scroll back up one picture? My understanding was that these units were all having the two-car garages. Is that not the case?
That is correct. These are just a sample.
Sort of a design, similar design, even if it's not the same size. That left one there, and this is the size that we're talking about, right?
Correct. So if you were to mirror this size here to the other side, exactly. Still the stagger, still the, you know, the same roof lines, et cetera, but.
Okay, thanks.
That's not to say, and this could happen, but I think we would like this flexibility. Oftentimes, folks don't need all of the area or the room or the two-car garage. Some folks are single or widowed, and so I think we would like the possibility of shrinking it slightly, so that it didn't have to be a two-car garage. So that flexibility would be nice in a decision that would be rendered. But yeah, so generally speaking, the footprints have the ability to accommodate a two-car garage, but there is the possibility that somebody might want to build a little bit smaller, and we would like to reserve that right, if possible.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you want to practice your Google Earth now and do your neighborhood tour? And then I think, as Jesse said, maybe we'll then we'll turn it over to some public comment if the board agrees with that.
Yeah. Please hold.
Jesse, do you usually read the letters before we go to public comments? And discuss?
Yeah, I was gonna read the letters beforehand, but I guess I'll let Rob do the Google Earth first, and then I'll do the letters.
Yep.
Okay, what are you guys looking at now?
Yeah, Google.
Okay. Let me see if I can get my little guy here and come on the street. Whoops. Gotta move this to there. And we're off. Okay. So this is Mrs. Stepler's house. This is her driveway here. The roadway would be coming in generally right here. So all of this vegetation that you see on the right-hand side, all this mature vegetation, generally speaking, including the wetland within it, is all going to remain. So coming westbound, if you were this car, coming westbound, just to give you some perspective as to what you would see. It's Imus. And then you would continue on, and the curb cut is right about here. Can everybody see my cursor? All of this vegetation, as you're heading westbound, is going to remain. So there's a pretty good vegetated buffer. Granted, that's deciduous, and I don't know if there's really any evergreen. There's a little bit of evergreen in here. It looks like hemlock and some others. So, but generally speaking, you're not going to be seeing anything from this direction. So you go a little bit farther up, same deal. You're going to be seeing the first unit, which is Mrs. Stepler's house. Now, that will likely take on a new sheathing, new siding and trim work, probably a new asphalt roof, and then it will be upgraded in the interior to be to the same standard, the same style as the rest of the condo units. Driveway, obviously, would be reconfigured so that it would be off of the road. So until you get about here, you're really not seeing the proposed project, okay? Now, as you look in, so the project is beyond back over here, okay? And then there are some units back, you know, kind of back behind the house here. So just as you're driving by, you're right on the driveway, but really not seeing a lot of the, a lot of the proposed development. As you continue on, I'll just get up the street a little bit. There's, that's my, by the way, I think that's my sewer manhole right there. I was talking about tying it, just for informational purposes. So as you're looking into the property, Mrs. Stepler's house will remain. The garage, you know, will be, you know, resided, and the garage will probably be reconfigured to the side, so that's not an entrance off of the street anymore. So probably, and there is the opportunity to either, you know, have this asphalt remain. We would take this portion out, or more than likely, I think it might be nicer for this person to come off of the new community's road. And then, as we get a little bit farther along, you'll see that all of these houses have, you know, side-gabled roofs, as we do. I don't know why Mrs. Stepler's house is blocked out here. So we have side-gabled roofs, similar in pitch, similar in overall scale to each of our units. These happen to have, you know, garages off the side. Our units will be a little bit more compact, and if anything, not as sprawling for the actual units themselves. The structure, the total structure is similar. Total structure for both units is similar in length to what you see here from a scale point of view. Again, the front gabled dormer, the window dormers, the gabled window dormers that you see here. We have some ranches across the street that are a little bit lower in overall massing. But on this side of the street, I think we're pretty consistent with what we're proposing. As we go a little bit farther down the street, just to give you some perspective from the eastbound lane or side, what you would be seeing. This house blocks a lot of what would be back behind it off to the, this is the tree line here. We're going to be cutting into that tree line a little bit, but obviously, you'll be looking at the house here. There's some vegetation right behind Mrs. Stepler's house that can remain. So the units will be back just behind that. There were some trees that we looked at during the site visit. They were X-ed out on the plan. Those still will be removed. But this vegetation here will be, can and will remain. Probably, this roadie over here will probably be cut back a little bit. But generally speaking, this would just be spruced up. It's pretty nice now, but, you know, it'll be just made to be of the same standard. So where the driveway is right now, what you see there So where the driveway is right now, what you see there is almost identical to what you'll see coming in. Slightly more asphalt and probably, you know, right in that, you know, that's that strip that you're seeing right there. It's pretty much the same, same location as we're coming in. So that kind of gives you some perspective as to what you'll see. So in terms of fitting in and being consistent with the surrounding neighborhood, we feel strongly that one, you barely see it. Two, there's a vegetated buffer from the majority of the butters. Mr. David, or Shivitz, if I'm saying it right, I'm wrong, I apologize. Lived here, so we are looking to try to help him by screening the backyard and, you know, doing whatever is necessary to make sure that, that works out. This house here, the next property owner over will have vegetation behind their house. It'll remain and so on. So Mrs. Stepler actually owns behind these houses. That's in the area to the west of our site. That is all existing vegetation. There's a nice little isolated wetland back there that will remain. And all of that area will be protected as part of the homeowners association land. So that's, that's my Google tour for now. And I'll, I'll stop there and I can look at anything else you'd like in, in this Google while I have it up.
Any board members have anything else on the Google street view that they want to look at? Or have Rob show us? Okay. Then I will open this up to public comment. Before I do that, we did receive two emails, at least two that made it to us. And I will read these into the record. It doesn't mean that the people who wrote them can't speak as well. The first is an email from Bonnie Ladue, who's at 78 Loudville Road. This is subject proposed 18-unit development on Loudville Road. I am writing in regard to the proposed development of 18 units at 69 and 73 Loudville Road. I live at 78 Loudville Road and have lived here for the past 43 years. In that time, we have seen the traffic increase substantially. The speed limit of 35 miles per hour is rarely adhered to on this road. And having a driveway right after a curve in the road for access to these condominiums brings much concern to myself and my neighbors. Also of concern is the noise increase and the safety of people walking, riding bikes on this road. With 18 units and the possibility of each unit having two cars, you are looking at 36-plus vehicles entering and exiting that driveway daily, not counting other traffic. I am deeply concerned of the impact these units are going to have on this road and the additional noise and the fact that this was a residential area with only single homes. It will change dramatically the landscape of this area and bring down the home values in this area. I can understand someone wanting to maybe subdivide the lot to add a few homes back there, but certainly not 18 three-bedroom units. I am sure the conservation committee has many concerns that will also need to be addressed and would like this board to make sure that everyone's concerns are heard. And before any building is done, they have addressed all issues. Thank you for your time. And then I have another email here from Dina Theodore. Subject is Loudville special permit hearing. Hello, I am a resident of East Hampton who lives off of Loudville Road. I've become aware that a special permit has been applied for to develop 18 townhomes on Loudville Road. I understand there is a hearing this evening, but wanted to email my concerns as well. In an effort to be brief, I will quickly share some thoughts to consider. I don't know if resident concerns are taken into account when making these decisions, but I thought I would try. One, I am very concerned about setting a precedent whereby developers can buy single-family homes and build multi-units. We all have bought our homes on larger lots for a reason. I am concerned that this will change the landscape of Loudville Road and possibly affect future property values, let alone affect direct neighbors with increased noise and traffic. Two, given the number of units and the cars associated with each unit and visitors, if approved, it will greatly increase in the number of cars on Loudville. The speed limit is 35 miles per hour and is often not police-monitored or followed by drivers. People speed on that road. I am concerned about bicyclists, walkers, and the lack of visibility entering and exiting this development. Three, the development backs onto conservation land. I understand the Conservation Trust gave the recommendations and have voiced concerns as well with the number of proposed units that would be, they would be greatly impacting area wildlife growth, growth and land behind the development. Four, given the number of units, I don't know how that would affect East Hampton's water load capability. It is already an aging system. I also don't know about other utilities and whether or not they can handle it. Five, the application regarding traffic and accidents is using data that is over a year old and in one case from the period 2014 through 2017. The information is outdated. I don't know how a decision can be made based on this information. Our community has changed in the past year. Six, I don't know if the police and fire department have taken a look, but I would wonder how this number of units would affect their ability to respond accordingly or have access for emergency vehicles. I, I support expanding housing opportunities. However, I believe it must be done very carefully and safely. I would hate to see our neighborhood landscapes change because of big developers. Thank you for your consideration, Dina Theodore. So with that, if anybody else has any comments or questions, again, you can either virtually raise your hand on Zoom. If your camera's on, you can physically wave your actual hand.
Can you, Jesse, Jeff and I were talking about this. There were two letters written in August that were never, you know, entered into the record.
Okay.
Third and August fifth. I think the Posco much, much trust, I'm messing that up. The trust wrote a letter. It's, it's lengthy. I don't know how that works, but it has a cover letter. Maybe that could be read.
Yeah, I'll, I'll work on tracking down those letters while we listen to any of the comments.
Okay, great.
So again, you can, I see Mr. Williston has raised his hand. So you can, Mr. Williston, you can unmute yourself and begin speaking. If anybody else would like to raise their hand virtually or in person, we can hear from everybody. So Mr. Williston.
I can, that's Sam Williston. And those two emails raised some very good points. Are you going to address them or just shove them aside?
Well, so right, right now, what we're doing is we're, we're collecting comment from the public. So you can feel free to add your own input to this. We will then have a discussion based on this and ask questions from the applicant. If you have specific questions, we can get to those right now.
I'm wondering, what, what is the area zoned at now for single-family homes or farming? Or what's zoning on this area now?
This is zoned residential, which does allow for multifamily homes under our zoning bylaw.
Okay. And I'm wondering why only the exact of butters were notified and why a couple of houses down the road weren't notified? Because this is a huge impact in, in our yard, our property. We have a wetlands behind our house that comes from above. I'm, I'm not sure how it's going to, but development you're proposing. But I will walk up there and see how close it is. But there's some, like first said, there's some great wildlife and, and there is a stream, seasonal stream that runs right there, I'm sure. And that has been addressed to the Conservation Committee?
To Mr. Chairman, I could answer that for the gentleman.
Sure.
Mr. Williston, you're, you're correct. There's wetland resource areas in the vicinity and on the property. We're required to delineate those wetlands, provide that to the Conservation Commission, which we've done. They have provided what's called a determination of applicability on the property, which basically sets the wetland boundaries. Once we have that determination, performance standards within which, which we have to meet under the Wetlands Protection Act. And those are generally related to the proximity to wetlands, stormwater, and how that's handled. Potential for impacting those wetlands due to our proximity. We're not any, any of those wetland resource areas. We are not in the riverfront area, which is a 200-foot zone. Measured median, I'm sorry, measured 200 feet from the median annual high water line of the river. So there's about a 400-foot swath back there that's almost completely protected. Our side is 200 feet of that. We will not be in any of those areas. We did receive approval from the, from the Conservation. We determined that we met those performance standards with this project for both the adjacent impacts within some of the buffer zone as well as with the, with the stormwater meeting the 10 standards that are required under the Wetlands Protection Act and the standards that came out in 2008.
And I think the gentleman asked another question, which, which we get, you know, we get this question kind of commonly. But, you know, the requirement for, for this type of project is property owners within 300 feet of the boundary of the property are what get noticed in the mail. So I think I spoke with Mr. Wilson on the phone the other day. I think, I think, Mr. Wilson, I think your address, you said it was 41. So it is, it is, in some cases, it's unfortunate that, you know, we don't have the, the requirement or capabilities to notify, you know, everyone on Loudville. But it is good, and it's not, you know, I do say this and I say it kind of genuinely that it's good that you're here now. Because as we talked about on the phone, you know, the decision has not been made yet. So that, that isn't, that is worth something. It's meaningful.
Mr. Williston, do you have any other comments or questions at this point?
He went back on mute. And I see Carolyn Smith has raised her hand and there was a person in the chat who we can try to.
Okay, so let's start with Carolyn Smith.
Hi, Carolyn Smith, 40 Loudville Road. I'm also an agent and co-owner of Dilap Real Estate. And yeah, I, I just found out about this today because somebody dropped off a note. I think one of the people's letters you read. I, I understand that because of some of the zoning issues, no flag lots are allowed when you have a certain amount of, of frontage. And so this means that you've got people that have maybe four or five acres in the back of their property. But because you don't allow a flag lot, it means either you have to do something like this or you, you have to build a road that's, you know, up at least 60 feet wide so that you can build multiple houses. In some ways, this is somewhat disturbing to me that, because flag lots, yes, you don't get the tax revenue from it, but it also means less, you know, housing that's available on a particular piece of land. And I think a, a lot of areas in East Hampton, you have these kind of properties that people have enough land behind where you could put something like this. This is a lot of housing for a relatively small amount of land. I, I understand the need for housing, being in real estate. I'm not sure how affordable these condos are going to be. Do you have a price point? That's one of my questions. And I just think it's, it's too many. I, I can see having some, but not this amount. And again, traffic concerns. It's a busy road. Most of the houses are fairly close to the road. So we don't have a lot of room between the front yard and the road. It would be lovely to have a bike path or a walking path to make it, everything much calmer and safer. But that's not the reality. So just any responses to that would be great.
So Rob, can you, can you give a little information about the price points, I think? And also, I mean, it wasn't explicitly asked, but I'd be curious if you, if you and the applicant have talked about sort of a, a less dense or fewer units, something like that, sort of minimize the footprint or if that hasn't been discussed yet.
Yep. So a couple, a couple of things. So I'm going to go through a couple of items from not only this, this lady, but also some of the other folks. But I'll try to answer this lady's questions first. So the, the proposal is not based on just a random choice in terms of density. The planning board has very specific regulations about development of multifamily homes within the zoning district. We've adhered to that regulation. And based on that ratio that they provide for open space versus the number of units, we were able to develop 18 units without any special relief requested. So what you see is based on the zoning regulations that have been set forth. It's, I don't know when they were put in or promulgated, but generally speaking, you know, we're, we're just essentially following the rules that were put forth. As far as the, as far as the, the, each, each community that I've seen these developed in is a little bit different. So I do believe, and you probably have a better, Mrs. Smith, you probably have a better idea of, you know, the, the market. But East Hampton is a pretty hot market. These are going to be desirable units with first floor masters and two-car garages. And again, this is going to be a community that's essentially mostly mature adults. It's not an age-restricted community in any, by any means. And it's not going to be an affordable project. So it'll be quite nice and, and we would expect that the units, what I've seen, and, and don't hold me to the number because I'm not a, I'm not a Realtor nor am I the marketing person. But I've seen these go in the $350,000 to $400,000 range. That's what I would expect. Probably, I think if you said 375 to 385, that would probably be a pretty good guess.
I agree, I agree.
As far as, you know, there was a comment regarding big developers. This is not a big developer. This is the homeowner that's chosen to do this. They've owned the property for a number of years. Mrs. Stepler has owned it with her husband. You know, they were maintaining the property. It was a lot more open in the past. In, in the latter years of, of, of living there, they have been, haven't kept up with some of the vegetated management that they would have liked to. That was kind of an email that she provided to me earlier this week. So that's, you know, it's important to understand. As far as emergency access that was raised, all of the subdivision road, I'm sorry, that's not subdivision. All of the community roads meet, meet the subdivision standards and the street, street design standards. We have the cul-de-sac design diameter that were, that's required to make sure that all, all the emergency vehicles can get to all of the units. So that should not be an issue. That's to the town standard, our city standard. As far as noise, I do believe that this will be a fairly quiet community. Again, we would expect, and it's not restricted, but we would expect that generally speaking, these would be mature adults. Because you can, as you can imagine, if you have kids and want a big yard for $375,000 or so, you can get a pretty significant house with maybe a bigger yard if that's what you're looking for. These are generally folks that don't want to take care of their lawn. They'll let the homeowners association do so, take care of trash pickup, plowing, avoid. The town, the town really gets all the tax revenue without all of the burden of a subdivision road. So it's a nice alternative for the, for the city, I should say. And, and generally speaking, these are fairly quiet communities. They have homeowners associations and there's covenants that regulate what you can and can't do. You won't see goofy clotheslines outside. You won't see people parking boats in their side yard. So it's really a nice, manageable community. As far as the site distance that was brought up, I think that was by another member. We're on the right side of the curve, or the good side of the curve. Site distance is pretty extensive. I think if you look at the traffic study, you'll see that we drastically exceed the requirement for site distance. I think, I think actually the comment from the, the, the author of that letter was even a little bit light on the amount of traffic that would be generated. I think they were just talking generally cars. So I think they said 36 cars. I think that's accurate that there would be 36 cars. But there's a number of trips throughout the day that you would anticipate. Say it's 10 or so, 10 or 11 or so trips per, per unit. But it's obviously metered out over the day. Peak hour trips are very minimal. We reviewed that at the last meeting. I think we could probably find that if you'd like to see it. I think it was something like seven or, it was pretty minimal. And I think it was surprising to the planning board, you know, almost unbelievable. But it's based on how the trips are distributed throughout the few hours of the morning. And generally speaking, that's all based on the ITE manual and different applications for trip generation that our traffic engineer McMahon Associates had done. So I think we've covered all of those bases. We do understand the questions and concerns. It is in people's backyards. But we are required to meet all of the design criteria, all of the standards set forth in the special permit. And I believe we've done so. But to be happy to, if there are other questions, you know, I'm here. That's what we're here for.
Rob, just to follow up on a couple of those points. One, do, do you have any concern, or does the traffic report have any issues with the timing of the, the age of the data? I guess if you will, one of the letters mentioned?
No, I think they addressed that in the letter. I think there was a factor applied, first of all, and I'd have to go back through, but I do believe there was a factor applied. The trip generation is so minimal based on the, the capacity of the surrounding roadways that, you know, during my discussions with Paul Fergel from McMahon Associates, it really, it's arguably a drop in the bucket. You know, perceived, you know, you know, additional, there will be some additional cars in the road. There'll be a little bit more traffic, but it's very minimal in terms of traffic function in the level of service at the surrounding intersections, based on my discussion with Mr. Fergel and based on what they provided in their report. That said, COVID-19 has obviously adjusted the ability of any traffic engineer to get accurate data right now. So if we were to do counts right now, it'd probably be lower. So I think the 16 data with the factors applied that they did, I think they also applied a speed factor. I think that was another comment from a butter where they, they basically take not only the design speed, but they take the actual, the actual speed based on their, their traffic strips.
Okay. And then the other one, there was a discussion of visibility. And I think with the And I think what the letter writer was getting at, because I was thinking this too. You've talked about how you're keeping that vegetative buffer there, you know, as we were approaching on Google Earth. But you're moving the driveway a little closer to the vegetative buffer, right? I'm wondering if someone pulling out of there is going to have visibility to their left if they're making that left turn across traffic and if you've looked at that.
Yeah, so we're, yeah, I can, I can, let me see if I can get the plan back up here, guys. Actually, you know, I have Google Earth up still. Can you see this?
Yes.
Okay, let's go down a little farther here.
So I think where Ms. Stepler's driveway is right now, you can see has a pretty good view to the left. And before you get to the trees that would sort of obstruct it. I'm curious where the new driveway is, you know, on the other side there, if that's going to be, if that's still going to be the case or if you've looked at that.
Yeah, we have. And where we're going to be and where our stop, say our stop bars in here, you're looking, and because of the curve of the road, you're looking way down with westbound traffic. I mean, I can't, I can't shift over because it's Google Earth. But I mean, you could see, you can see for, I mean, if that's not 700, 800 feet, I'd be surprised.
So that's what you mean by you're on the good side of the curve? Is that it's away from that left turn?
Yeah, if we were on the, same, you know, it works in the same, you know, the same going in the other direction. Anybody going eastbound, you know, we have wonderful site distance at this site. And the curve actually helps us a little bit.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you. I saw Chris Cleland has a virtual hand raised. Mr. Cleland, you want to speak?
Sure. I've been a frequent flyer at these.
Can you just give us your address real quick for the record?
34 Carolon Circle.
Thank you.
I think my, you know, my big issue with this isn't so much, I think the project has been done well. You know, I think they've done a nice job of explaining everything and, you know, all that. I think my bigger issue is just that this is completely out of character with this end of town. You know, if you look like across town in an R35 zone, you don't have this kind of development. Except for a couple of places off the East Street with the, you know, 55 plus housing. And there's two other lots. There's one at like 97 Loudville. There's one at 55 Loudville that are similar size to Mrs. Stepler's lot. And I mean, what's to stop if you approve this, you know, what's to stop that from happening? You've got the, I think it's Orchard Hill Farm, like right around the corner on Oliver, like where Clark Lane and Oliver Street meet. That's 40 something acres and that's an old guy who's got that. I mean, that's nice flat land. You could easily throw up a subdivision in. You've got Mala Torres up on Oliver Street. It's like this whole section of town, you know, could be radically changed into this higher density stuff. You know, this higher density type of development. And it's just, you know, $375,000 houses, you know, back in there is condos, a condo cluster of 18 in this tiny space. It's just, it doesn't go with the character of that section of town. And my big concern is that you're going to end up starting a ball rolling process that kind of leads to, you know, radical re-characterization over here. That's all I got.
Thank you, Chris. Jesse, you're still muted.
Thanks, Jeff. Thank you, Mr. Cleland. Is there anybody else who's got any comments or questions?
Sorry, yeah, there was a Chris O'Connor said he couldn't raise his hand till he'll unmute when he's asked.
Chris O'Connor, this is your chance. Feel free to unmute. I don't see an audio connection next to his name at all.
Okay. Chris, if you're listening.
Yeah, there's a lot of feedback. Are you there?
No, that number just dropped off. So maybe they'll try to rejoin.
Okay. We'll give that a second.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, hallelujah. Thank you. So a little check illiterate, but I got there. Thank you very much.
Can you just give us your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. Chris O'Connor, 21 Ashley Circle off of Loudville.
Thank you.
And I thank you for having these. I think that they're fabulous, that we're getting a lot of different input. It really reflects well of the community. I really bring forward some of what's already been well spoken to, but I appreciate the couple of minutes to go through it. My concerns are safety, noise and cars. And basically the blind spot that you just referred to, I think that, you know, I ride my bike and walk and go that route many a times. And it is concerning for people and we're all of different ages. And I think that the reason I bought into the community was just for that, for not having more traffic. I know, I know the gentleman who's presenting the plan said that, you know, you suspect that there's not going to be a lot. In all fairness, there's no predicting what really 18 homes, 36 cars in one lane coming in and out. That's a lot. That's a lot. I mean, to be real, this is a big development. And I loved how the last gentleman spoke to that it changes the neighborhood. And that's, it's just a mismatch. It's not that, you know, one or two houses could not go in there. I think we all could probably agree that it's great. You know, everybody wants to have, you know, an expansion to, you know, to extend more, you know, housing. But it is throwing a curve, in my opinion, to the current neighbors and people that have invested in this community for what it really is right now. And it's a beautiful community. So I really, I appreciate the big pause. And I just want to underline that this is a, this is an extreme stretch. We're going from one house to 18. That's just, if we just look at that ratio, that's huge. And my biggest concern is I've been in other communities and it's happened, is the precedence. And it's just going to be a roll. I just, it's going to be so much easier. There's a reason why this is called, I believe, a special permit hearing because we're asking for an exception to some degree. And, you know, I just don't see the cause of the reason for it. But I'm hoping that it's really taken seriously that it's one to 18 units and all that it brings. So I'll stop there, but I really appreciate people's serious pause on this.
Thank you. Rob, you want to respond to that?
Yeah, thank you. So to Mr. Cleland's point and to Ms. O'Connor's point. First off, to Mr. Cleland's point, I had shown previous, and I'll share my screen again, just for some perspective on what we're talking about. Mr. Cleland lives at 42 Carolon. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Subject property is back here. 42 Carolon is here. There's.
I live at 34, which is.
I'm sorry, a little closer.
Yeah, it's right diagonal to it.
There you go.
Yeah, I think he's right across from that conservation land that's the back of the project.
Yep. So, Mr. Cleland, so just to kind of give you some perspective on potential impacts to you. You'll have, and I think I can measure this for you here, if we go in feet. You'll have from, this is the shed on the property, just to give you some perspective here. You know, to your back, and it looks like you have a little clearing behind your house. You know, roughly 673 feet from that location to your property. Also, what I wanted to point out is Carolon Circle, albeit a little bit less dense than the rest of the neighborhood back there, is still, let me get rid of this, is still off of a very dense subdivision.
I am aware of the density of my own neighborhood. Thank you.
If I could just finish, sorry. I think if I could finish.
Yeah, Mr. Cleland, let Rob finish and I'll give you a chance to respond as well, okay?
Thank you. So just to give you some perspective, these homes, if you look at them in scale, in proximity, distance from the road, are very similar in scale to what we're proposing. So the argument is being made that, you know, 600 and some odd feet away, that we're going to be inconsistent with the neighborhood. I would argue, again, respectfully, that this neighborhood is actually more dense than what we're proposing because there's no open space associated with it. You have very small lots, almost houses right next to each other, without any open space, without any buffering. And you know what? I bet you people love living here. Looks like a cute little neighborhood. Some of them have in-ground pools, some have above-ground pools. But, you know, people enjoy this and it's not inconsistent with the neighborhood. What we're proposing is actually less dense, is very similar in general size to the units that exist from single-family homes to the proposed. And ours won't be visible, where these are right next to each other and everybody's living happily together. The only folks that are really going to have to deal with this project are the folks that are right within the community. They'll have neighbors next door. It provides a really nice living environment. But as far as the surrounding neighborhood, as you can see, going back and looking at where you are and looking at where the site is, it's certainly a pretty significant distance away. As far as noise, as far as impact to your property and, you know, being aggrieved, I don't, I just don't see it respectfully. Thank you.
Yeah, my, like I said, I mean, you know, you're not from town. The area off of West Street where my neighborhood is located, off of, there's a little street called Little Street, ironically enough. The area from West Street, if you go out, I always say I like our neighborhood because if you go out one direction, you're in town in five minutes. And if you go out in the other direction, you're in the woods in five minutes. So Loudville Road is a fundamentally different area than the front area of my neighborhood. It just is. And I think anybody here from town would probably tell you the same thing. And like I said, I, my questions are not for you. I think that your plans have met what you set out to do. My question is more for the planning board, because there is a lot of area that does, that would directly impact, maybe not my house, but certainly the reason that we moved here, that if we start that ball rolling, that's my biggest concern. It's not this particular development. It's that what this, what this special permit that is required to be issued, because this is not typical for an R35 zoned area, that the issuance of this permit would make it much harder for the planning board in the future to say no to further creating more neighborhoods like my own on what is now open space. So, you know, I've seen, I've been very impressed with what you've presented over the last several meetings. I think that you guys have done a nice job of outlining the houses. And I don't think, you know, from my house, other than the construction noise, I think you're correct. I probably won't be all that affected by it. But I will be affected and a lot of other people will be affected if all of a sudden we start looking at this section of town as the next area to build large subdivisions like the one that we're proposing. I realize this is small in scope, but it's a small area and there's a lot of area around here that could be developed.
Yeah, if I could through the chair, I do, I do hear what the gentleman's saying. And I think he's got a good point about the potential for other projects. Obviously, the planning board, particular to this special permit, has to adhere to, you know, the presentation before them and with the merits of that presentation. But I can make a suggestion, and it would probably be something that you could work on. If you do feel like those other outlining areas are improperly zoned, you know, land ninjas like me, or land guys like me, I'm just kidding. But, you know, land guys like me, we have to follow the rules. So, you know, right now, the way that this property is zoned, if we meet the special permit requirements, arguably, you know, we should receive a special permit if we meet those requirements and if that can be proven. If you, you know, just a suggestion, if you do have concerns about those other properties, there is the opportunity, and it's a little easier in a city form of government, to look at changing the zoning so that it doesn't allow those other properties to be developed in the same manner. Just something to think about, you know, it could, you know, it might not be as difficult as you think. Something that goes before the planning board and the planning board makes a recommendation to the city council. So, you know, if there are other properties that you do have concerns with, it's something that can be addressed. And I like your shirt, by the way.
Thank you.
All right, Rob and Chris, thank you both. Any other public comments or questions? Ms. Smith, you want to speak again?
Yeah, just to further what he just said, that I think there needs to be some consideration with the planning board and the ZBA about changing some of the zoning. Because I had a parcel, a five acre parcel of land on Plain Street that was behind a person's house. And he had specifically bought that piece of land, you know, to just maintain it. It's all woods. He wanted to sell it, but when he found out that he would have to either, four or five houses would be built back there. And I actually had somebody that wanted to do a condo project. And that was what the town's zoning required of that piece. He said, I don't want to sell it. And he knew the neighbors didn't want to sell. So I think this is definitely an issue in town.
So I'll jump in, you know, it's a sidebar. I think I appreciate Mr. Cleland's, you know, comments and concerns. And I just want, for people who are interested in this, and this is our first kind of condominium proposal in years, to be quite candid. This is not a regular occurrence. We have multiple planning studies that are just about underway. So for people who are interested in housing, you know, we've been working kind of diligently to get funding for a housing needs assessment and a housing production plan and a housing market analysis. So those are about to sort of kick off. There's a, we have a consultant who's been hired to do kind of a townwide housing assessment. The thing that is really important, though, is across the board, market rate, affordable housing, big units, small units, we need more housing. So we are going to be facing some really important decisions as a, as a community about. We cannot have every single neighborhood say, we need housing, but not here. So part of the project is to, part of the project is to look around and figure out where housing is acceptable. And that is a sticky wicket. It's a really hard question and it's even harder answers. The other thing, I just want to put a plug in, we're also going to be updating our open space and recreation plan. So we're about to launch a community survey. So people need to be paying attention as much as possible. The Planning Department Facebook page is our primary place to learn of these measures. So as this proposal comes in, again, I'll reiterate that we need housing. And that's what the housing study is going to show us. But we also need to protect open space. And so how do we strike the balance between those, they're really conflicting things? So stay tuned because we're, we have planning efforts underway to start to look at the big picture. But I think as of right now, you know, and Jesse, you can chime in, and the board can chime in. You know, we don't operate on precedent. So just because a special permit gets granted, it doesn't automatically make it easier for the next one. I can understand that the perception and the feeling that that has. But, you know, like the planning board doesn't look back at other decisions. And, you know, for this one, we wouldn't be looking back at some other decisions, say, well, we did it here, so we're going to do it here. It's all individualized. But I know, to Mr. Cleland's point, I know that doesn't leave you rest assured. But, you know, it's this, it's this proposal in this neighborhood. And that's the context that the planning board has to kind of focus on for now. So thanks.
May I speak again? Sorry.
Who was that? Chris O'Connor?
Yes, may I speak again, please?
Sure.
Yes, and everybody, I think, can understand the expansion of housing. And I've just been a, I would say a victim of the precedents where all good intentions are there. But once it's set, it's like a path that it's very hard to do, to not do it. But I really, really want to emphasize, we could get more housing there. But it doesn't have to be a one to 18 ratio. I think that's the, it really is putting, it's a big swing versus something that, you know, is adding some housing, but maybe even not that. If you really decide that you have to do. If you really decide that you have to do this for income or whatever, you know, well, let's do it in moderation, not such a big, such a big swing. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to follow up, I think Rob mentioned the idea of changing the zoning. So procedurally, we can get the ball rolling on the planning board, but it's ultimately approved and changed at the city council level. So I think if people are concerned about sort of, if this application is making you concerned about other parts of town where that might happen, I would certainly encourage you to talk to your city councilor and see if there's an appetite for changing that kind of zoning. Because as Rob said, we are servants to the bylaws. So, you know, there's some discretion where we look at these things and there's some language, you know, in this multifamily bylaw, for example, you know, about sort of integrating it into the environmental areas and the neighborhood where we have some judgment. But a lot of the stuff, you know, our hands are tied. So this is really, you know, I wouldn't say it's a by right use, but it's sort of a presumption that if they satisfy our concerns, that there can be a multifamily complex here. What that means as far as scope and size and location is obviously up in the air. But, you know, to the extent that that's a change that people want to see in the city, that, you know, I would by all means bring that up with city council, because that's certainly something that they're capable of changing. Any other comments or questions from the public?
Just one more quick plug, just to make sure we don't miss anyone. If you're on a phone dialing in, you can hit star nine to raise your hand. Just because I see at least one, I see one phone number still, just a phone number. I just want to make sure we're not missing someone who wants to chime in.
And also, at this point, if somebody just wants to unmute themselves and ask to speak, we're, we're comfortable with that when we get down to the bottom here. Okay. Planning board members, any comments or questions based on what we've heard here so far? Mr. Zarvis?
Thank you, Jesse. Just had a quick question. Jeff, I'm going to direct this to you and maybe you, Jesse, a little bit. Looking at the process, I have some comments I want to make. I'm going to hold them off right now. Do you have anything that, because I'm not seeing anything at this point that we're waiting for? I do see the need to talk about the Conservation Commission's recommendations, then in the letter that they put out. I want to discuss that. But in terms of big pieces, Rob just, in my opinion, just delivered a lot of what we'd asked for in the last couple of meetings. Do you see anything else outstanding that would delay this decision?
I mean, the one I want, right, I think a lot of the information that we wanted about trees and slope and stuff, we can solve with our site visit. I mean, I would definitely like to go back and see where things are staked out so we can, we can look at some of that stuff. So for me, I don't think that's something that Rob has to produce today. It's not like we've asked for a tree census at this point, but I certainly would feel more comfortable at least going and observing that.
Reasonable. So the site visit, at the very least, will push this out past that. Okay.
I'm only one person, but I would like to do that before I vote on it.
I agree with you. You're two with me.
Okay.
Okay, so then can we talk about the Conservation Commission letter a little bit and their two recommendations?
Yeah, so just for the record, this, so this is a, Jeff, is this a draft that we were given? Is that right?
Yeah, so the Conservation Commission, as the applicant described, did issue an order of conditions, which means that they reviewed the project, have established the conditions. It's not official yet where it hasn't been signed and recorded. But what you have is a memo from the Conserv-
Yeah, just real-
From the conservation agent. And, and what happens is there's a couple of areas that, you know, the Conservation Commission wanted to make a recommendation on the planning board to consider, you know, if the planning board's moving forward with an approval, or at least in your deliberations, that you consider their, their additional requests. You know, sometimes they don't, sorry.
Why don't I read that into the record here, just so everyone who's at home can listen to this? So this is from the Conservation Commission. Excuse me, it's entitled "Recommendations for the East Hampton Planning Board for 6973 Loudville Road, Master D P number 151-0268. The East Hampton Conservation Commission would like to make the below recommendations to the East Hampton Planning Board for their consideration of the proposed condominium development at 6973 Loudville Road. These recommendations are summarized from the public hearing for the proposed project conducted on July 13, 2020, August 10, 2020, and August 24, 2020. The recommendations are as follows. A protective designation be given to undeveloped areas within the property so as to prevent expansion into areas not within the jurisdiction of the Wetlands Protection Act. An evaluation of isolated vegetated wetlands which, within the property for possible vernal pool designation. These recommendations are designated as such because it is not within the purview of the commission to require these measures, but they may be considered by the planning board. The commission voted to issue an order of conditions with special conditions, which has also been provided below. Any proposed deviations from the final plans of record relevant to this order of conditions or subject to the jurisdiction of the Wetlands Protection Act should be relayed to the East Hampton Conservation Commission for review. The Conservation Commission may be contacted through the conservation agent, and it provides a phone number and email. And there is a draft version, at least of the general conditions. So if I understand this right, Jeff, this is concerns that the Conservation Commission had, but it's outside their jurisdiction to require it, and so they're just giving us a heads up that this might be something that we could roll into our decision?
Yes, and I will say that I think each one of them takes a little bit of consideration as to how or what, how it would unfold. I like, so the idea of getting a protected designation, you know, there's a range of options there. So that, you know, I got that, I got that memo today and forwarded it off immediately to you, and I also forwarded it to the applicant. We don't know what that means yet, so that would be something that would need to be discussed. But that is, you know, that's something that they don't have the authority to do. And then the idea of the evaluation, so that's something that we would, we would probably talk to the applicant about, understanding what capabilities they might have to do that before the planning board renders a decision.
Okay. James, another question?
Well, I think that was great, what you just said, Jeff, the timeline, the fact that we just got it. I was curious if Rob had had a chance to evaluate this. And really comprehending what these two statements are, I think are very important, the request. The vernal pool, that one seems perhaps easier, although maybe not, certainly needs discussion. The other one, I'd really love to see if maybe, if Rob has some time, not tonight, I think maybe at the next meeting, to kind of show us what your interpretation of the areas they mean to preserve that aren't in their purview might be, and kind of show us on the map so that we might be able to get a sense of where that is and what that means specifically. I mean, you might be able to kind of wing it. You're that good. I've seen it, but I don't want to put that pressure on you.
I think I actually have it pretty easily on, on the plan. So anything outside the limit of work, we're planning on preserving. So whether that be through a decision by the planning board and then gets incorporated into the Homeowners Association documents, I think I even suggested that to the planning board. The intent of Mrs. Stepler was always to preserve the area down by the river. Try to preserve the buffers. So anything, anything that we have outside the limit of work, we want to leave alone. So we're on board 100% with that. As far as the vernal pool certification, that is in an area that will remain untouched. If somebody would like us to try to certify that, just, we just need to make sure that, that condition be set up so that it doesn't hold anything else up, because vernal pool certification is obviously a seasonal scenario where we would be looking at it probably next spring. And, you know, determining what's in there and whether it qualifies for certification. Or, you know, makes perfect sense to us, doesn't hinder our project in any way. And if anything, if it provides a little further protection under the MISA regs or whatever is applicable, we'd be happy to look at that.
It sounds like these are relatively simple conditions then on our part. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Question?
Brenda?
Hi, Rob, just following up on that. So I just want to be clear. Are you willing to, is the applicant willing to formally reserve that land? I forget what it's called. I'm still new to all this, but, or is it an informal agreement?
I would call it formal, and I think there's a couple of different, and Jesse could certainly help us out with this. But there's two different forms of a conservation restriction, if that's what you're talking about. If I'm familiar with, one is a declaration of restriction, which ends up being a little bit less costly for the owner, because it doesn't have to go through the same scrutiny with the E O E A and the AG's office and, you know, that review process. So declaration of restriction, in my opinion, would be probably appropriate here, because this will be protected under the deed restrictions provided with the Homeowners Association documents and Master Deed. And then we could provide a further declaration of restriction on the open, quote unquote, open space. So, and then I think by your decision, only allowing us to work within the limit of work proposed, I think that will further, I think there'll be essentially three layers of, of protection for those areas, if that answers your question.
And just to be clear, that land, you wouldn't make available for active or passive use by the public?
Generally speaking, homeowners associations don't want the general public coming on their property, and this is not really a place for active recreation. And passive recreation certainly could, you know, you could have visitors that are visiting the residence. There wouldn't be any restrictions on that. But I don't think they're, from a liability standpoint, they want folks coming on the property and, you know, congregating in any way. And it's really not that type of area. And I think during our site visit, you'll kind of see, when it does start to slow down in the river, it's fairly steep. We don't want people trampling down there more than, you know, we want, we want people to be walking around enjoying the open space. There's certainly a big area on the western side that I think could be easily utilized, is much more, you know, there's a lot more advantage to that. And I don't expect that that is going to be policed in any way. But I think from a, probably from a homeowner's standpoint, I would assume that they would want it to be a private area that each, because each owner has a percentage interest in the, in the general, in the common area. So just from a, from a insurance standpoint, I think it's appropriate that it be protected by those layers that we talked about, but not public. It would be a private, you know, ownership.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Jeff, you got something?
It was just maybe a reminder, if there are two other correspondences, right? I think one was from Mr. Cleveland.
Just about to read those.
Okay, and then if I, I think if I heard members, artists question, you know, what's kind of outstanding as we kind of move forward, there is the, I think, something that would really be important for the board to fully understand is the outcome of any conversations with the applicant and the immediate abutter. Because that was left, you know, that's, it seemed like that was a very active conversation. And I think from the previous meetings, you know, that was an area of concern in terms of the location of a unit. And it's, you know, it would require tree removal. So I do think that we're hopeful for a positive outcome. The planning board has, has done, you know, kind of great efforts to come up with this compatible, you know, opportunities to work together. But I do think like, if for some reason that that's not achieved, you know, that would be still a design component that we would, we would need to talk about at the next meeting.
So if I could through the chair, I do believe, and I don't want to speak out of school because I have not had a direct conversation with, and the abutter, I'm going to leave it at that. I haven't had a direct conversation. I've spoken with Attorney Jacobic at length, at least, at least, at least two times, the latest one today. So my understanding is that we're on the same page. But, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, based on my discussions to date, I wouldn't expect any need for any design changes that would change the, you know, wholesale changes to the layout design. But certainly, we would be looking to affect changes, not only necessary, but desired by the abutter in that location, so that we can properly screen that and, and be good neighbors.
Thanks, Rob. James?
Following up on that, Rob. I very much got a sense, and I like what Jeff was saying, is like, we want to see resolution to that. And I heard what you said that seemed, seemed to be going well. I'm not sure where that leaves us in terms of next meeting, in terms of getting some kind of proof or documentation, or, I get the sense, and I know for myself, that I want to see that come to good fruition. But is that just you saying, "Yeah, he's happy"?
Yeah, I appreciate where you're coming from. So my discussions to date were centered around the, either a memorandum of understanding or a letter of support from the owner based on what we provide. And, you know, we would make sure it's transparent for all.
And also, I mean, obviously, the abutter can come, I mean, if there isn't a resolution, the abutters are welcome to come, like many of the other neighbors have, to the next hearing and raise their concerns. And we can address those if they haven't been addressed already. Brenda, did you have another question?
Yeah, Rob, so I just really want to be clear. Is the applicant willing to reduce the scale or scope of this project? Just kind of yes or no?
So respectfully, and this is always a trick, right? Respectfully, arbitrarily, no. If there's a specific design, criteria or standard that we're not meeting, but, you know, an overall, you know, reduction in the number, or going from two to one on any of the units, there's no regulatory reason that I see at this point. I do think we've done a good job in presenting something that meets the criteria. And I do think the, the subject area that we're talking about with the abutter is obviously important to them and is important to us. And we need to do a good job of screening that, you know, regardless of the outcome of the discussions. So, but I think we can do that effectively. So we, we are not, as you can imagine, we are not looking to reduce units, especially arbitrarily. I don't see how any reduction of units changes the general scope of the project. And I believe that we meet all of the calculation requirements set forth under your regulations. I do think it's going to, I really feel strongly, it's going to be a nice little community. And I do feel that it's a realistic statement that this is going to be minimally visible from Loudville.
Yeah, so Rob, just sort of following up on what Brenda said, and I raised it earlier, but there was a lot of other stuff going on. I mean, I want to go walk the site again and see. But my, my initial thought, I mean, the thing that's really hanging me up is largely the tree removal and the density part in that area. And so that, to me, is sort of what I'm thinking of as a reason why I might be more comfortable with fewer units than I would be with 18. But again, I'm just, I just want to give you a heads up that that's sort of, that was my thought when I looked at this. And I, I really do want to see how it looks when I go out and see where the actual units are staked out and all of that. But that, to me, is the part that's giving me pause, where we do have to consider minimization of removal of trees and vegetation. And then I think just the sheer volume of it, maybe something where some of these neighbor complaints about sort of the character of that neighborhood, maybe something that would give people pause, which obviously none of the planning board members have talked to each other about this, so I don't know how anyone else feels. But that, just, just so you know where I'm thinking at this point, like, I don't think that that's necessarily arbitrary. I don't think anything we do is arbitrary, but that's my job. But that's sort of my thought, and I don't know if Brenda has different thoughts about why or what she's thinking about. But just so you know, I think that's something that's, that's out there.
And I'll just add to that, because I think, you know, I think not having been able to do the site visit is, is a little bit of a, it's just too bad. I think that we didn't get to do that before this one. But just for clarity, I think the conversation has been good and cooperative so far, which I'm really happy about. But for clarification, Rob, I think that there are two places where we still have to kind of get the planning board so that they can render a decision and make some findings. And I'll just note them real quick and we can look at them later. But, you know, there are citing and, citing and layout requirements under the multifamily section. So in particular, I think the remaining issues of tree removal and density kind of come down to 8.331, which talks about how it's integrated, you know, into the terrain and surrounding landscape, and talks about, you know, minimization of tree removal. So I just don't know that we've had enough of that discussion that we know that it's the minimum to really make this happen. And then, you know, the other findings under the special permit criteria that, from, and I'm just basing this on the discussions that I've been listening to, is subsection I, so it's the finding section, 12.7.9. But it's, you know, minimization of area over which existing vegetation is removed and where tree removal is required, special attention is given to planting of replacement trees. So I think it's something where we will learn and observe from the site visit and then come back for that, for a final discussion of that. I think that's where, where I'm seeing the zoning ordinance still gives, still gives us some additional weight.
I would also throw in section 8.332. The project must be in harmony with the prevailing character and scale of buildings in the neighborhood.
If I could, through the chair, I, Ms. Slayer, I, is that, if that's okay, Jesse?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. I do believe I've addressed that. I do, I do believe that I've shown you that we have almost, almost the same architectural character, similar roof lines, massing, and gables to what exists on Loudville. Not to mention that this is, has been proven, generally speaking, not to be visible in any great fashion from Loudville or the surrounding neighborhood. As far as tree removal, the minimization of tree removal is in fact a part of our project. You're focused on the units themselves and directly adjacent to the units, which if you get out and visualize these backyards, guys, these are like 20-foot to 25-foot backyards tops. So we are absolutely minimizing the tree removal. The perception of, of minimizing, so if, if we minimize tree removal where, to a point, an arbitrary point, or to a point where we had no tree removal, you wouldn't be able to do a project. We need to remove trees to put in roads and to put in units. We meet the open space requirements. I do believe strongly that we're meeting all of your criteria. Certainly for the scale of the units, certainly for the neighborhood, we can't make them single-family homes and, and still do this project. You know, it's just, it's not, it's not feasible. And, and that's, and that's not what the intent of the special permit is that we were doing, so.
Why is it not feasible? Help me understand that.
Why?
Yeah, it's not financially feasible?
Correct.
Okay. Just so, you know, to help you understand where I'm coming from with this 8.332, in terms of the prevailing character of the neighborhood, so I've driven by so many times. But, you know, there's no multi-family complexes, there are no duplexes, there are very few two-story, two-garage homes, you know, I started to go up and down and try to count them, and, I mean, just as many homes have no garages as have two garages, two-car garages, and most have a one-car garage and often it's detached. And I think the issue of scale, I don't, you know, I don't feel it's fair to compare one of the duplex units to one of the, the single-family buildings. We're comparing buildings, it says, and scale of buildings in a neighborhood. And one of these buildings is like three or four combined single-family homes. I mean.
If I could clarify.
A building is much bigger than, well, based on, you know.
I mean, look, look at the footprint.
Some of the neighboring homes are like 900 square feet and 1,000 square feet, and so I'm just saying, in terms of scale, it says scale of buildings in the neighborhood. So I was just comparing a single-family building to one of these buildings, which is the combined unit. So I don't think it's quite fair to compare one duplex unit to one single-family home. That's where I was coming from.
Well, do you want, so, okay, so let's, let's look at that. So let's compare Mrs. Stupler's house.
Let's compare the, one of the duplexes. I think that's really.
No, that's, no, that's what I'm saying. I'm comparing it to Mrs. Stupler's house. That's an existing house with an.
Well, no, we're talking about the character of the neighborhood, and go to the next-door house, and it's a little cape, two over, doesn't have a garage, and, you know, I mean, we could get into an inventory of all the houses on the road, but that would take a long time.
So I, I'm going to, I'm going to bow out at this point. I, I respect, I'm going to respect your opinion and, and not argue. There's, I, I just spent the last three days arguing with planning boards, and you guys are too nice to do it.
Okay, thanks, Rob. Bye.
Thanks, Rob. James, you've been very patient.
Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
I want to offer a countervailing opinion. I very much think this is in character with the neighborhood. I very much believe that these buildings are in character with many of the surrounding houses. I don't think this is too dense. I think if we were talking 60 to 80, it would be a trigger for me. Traffic-wise, it's not an issue. We'll be voting on this later, but I'm going to go to this, if I can make it with work, this walkthrough with an open mind, but I'm coming at it from a different direction based on what I'm seeing from the data I have here. I need to have it proven to me that this is out of character, because in terms of the size of the house, the type of house shown, the design, it really in no way, on paper, as shown is. So I, not everyone has that view. I just want to put that out there.
Thanks, James. Anybody else have any comments or questions, or otherwise I'll jump in and read a couple more letters here, work on my public reading skills. All right. So the first one I'm going to read is an August 3, 2020 letter. This is on behalf of the Board of Directors for Pascama Conservation Trust, and it has a lot of attached materials, which I'm not going to go through, but it is, Jeff, I believe these are available on the website, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Dear Planning Board and Conservation Commission members, after further review of the site plan for the proposed development, we would like to make the following additional observation, as well as emphasize several zoning and master plan provisions we believe should be considered in reviewing this project. As was noted during prior public meetings, each building or unit has only minimal yard space, and several of the buildings are located immediately adjacent to the slopes above Hanham Brook or quite close to existing houses or other project units. We are quite concerned that this paucity will only increase pressure on the immediately adjacent natural areas in the form of built encroachments such as decks, recreational activity, informal paths, and other commonly observed forms of disturbance and degradation of natural habitats. There are also no apparent provisions made for disposal of yard waste, which we frequently see dumped into neighboring natural areas, even by homeowners with ample space on their own property. Furthermore, we note that no plan has been presented for disposition of, management of, or use of, the land outside the development footprint. It appears from our reading of the zoning code that some sort of protection of the remaining open space is a requirement for granting a special permit. Unfortunately, the extent and proposed configuration of the development and the site's essentially landlocked situation surrounded by continuous private house lots and the brook leave little opportunity for broader public access. Reaching the undeveloped portion from Hanham Brook Conservation Area would require a trail traversing immediately below the buildings, which would not be desirable for either residents or visitors. At the same time, some sort of permanent city protection for the remaining area, short of general public access, is advisable. One possibility to, possibility to address all of these concerns is a permit condition requiring a plan not only for protection of, but also for use of, the undeveloped portion to relieve the potential for misuse of the area along the brook and forced through a city conservation restriction. This plan could include a common recreation area such as a small playground, a short neighborhood trail in the woods, or small landscaped garden, and most important for preservation of the neighboring natural area, a well-defined and confined shared location to receive brush and lawn clippings generated by the units. We believe the following sections excerpted from the zoning ordinance and the city's current master plan are of possible relevance to the planning board's consideration of a special permit for this development. Finally, we have attached a sketch of the site plan superimposed over an aerial photograph of the area and two images of the project site as seen from the end of the trail at Hanham Brook Conservation Area. Thanks once again for your consideration of these points. Sincerely, Garrett Stover, Volunteer Land Conservation Advisor on behalf of the Board of Directors, Pascama Conservation Trust. And I, Rob, just reading, I think we talked a little bit about the conservation restriction, but I'm curious if there's been any plans or discussion about disposal of yard waste and how that's going to be handled?
Yep, so it will be handled with private trash pickup. It'll be, typically, it'll be two receptacles, one for trash, one for recycling. They would be stored in garages and then wheeled out to the street and then picked up privately.
Okay, thank you. All right, and then I have another letter here. This is from Mr. Cleveland who spoke earlier. This is dated August 5, 2020. Dear Mr. Bag, Ms. Webb, and members of the planning board, my name is Chris Cleveland of 34 Carol Ann Circle, and I am writing a response to the proposed development at 69 and 73 Loudville Road. I have lived in East Hampton since 2012, and I've been extremely impressed with the recent improvements to the city. From the boardwalk along the pond to the revitalization of the mills and the new school project, I applaud your efforts to improve and highlight what a great town we live in. You've done an amazing job of developing the town while retaining the character of its open spaces, diverse neighborhoods, and business districts. My single largest concern is that your approval of this development will essentially greenlight further development on lower Loudville Road between West Street and Torrey Street, and indeed, anywhere within the R-35 zoning district. This has the potential to turn an area of large, single-family lots to one of the high-density development and fundamentally change the character of the nearby area and the town as a whole. As it says on page 72 of the East Hampton Master Plan, quote, "Poorly conceived changes in land use patterns can dramatically alter a community in a short period of time," end quote. For example, the following parcels are in the immediate vicinity of the proposed development and offer similar topographical profiles. 97 Loudville Road, 91 Loudville Road, and 55 Loudville Road. In addition, by allowing this development, you are setting the stage for the following nearby parcels, which are currently under Chapter 61A restriction, to be open to development should the landowner decide to take the property out of Chapter 61A and the town decline to purchase the land. And then there's identifying Orchard Hill Farm and Molotaurus Orchard. All of the aforementioned properties are in the R-35 zoning district. The only examples of densely packed multi-family housing anywhere in town within the confines of the R-35 zoned areas are the Lathrop Retirement Community off Florence Road and the various retirement communities on East Street. The Lathrop site consists of 175 acres, 100 of which are conservation land, and 40 of which are set aside for agriculture. This makes Lathrop hardly analogous to the Loudville proposal. The East Street communities also occupy large, previously undeveloped parcels and are tucked into a narrow R-35 corridor between East Street and Ferry Street. While I sympathize with Mrs. Stupler's desire to cash in on her property, the proposed development plans are not in line with either the character of the nearby area or anywhere else in town with R-35 zoning. I don't really know how the planning committee arrives at a decision to approve or deny a project, but given all the great things happening in town, I assume that decisions are made in an impartial and objective manner. So I must say that listening to the July 21 meeting, I was concerned about the planning board's tone with Mr. Leveque. During the portion of the hearing with the abutters of the proposed Dunkin' Donuts on East Street, one of the planning board members told Mr. Leveque that he was doing, quote, "a great job." And later during the Loudville Road hearing, Mr. Leveque caught himself saying, "When the project is underway before changing it to if." Perhaps it was just my impression, but I understand Mr. Leveque's Freudian slip here because it seemed that he was directing the committee. While it is easy to be impressed by Mr. Leveque's knowledge and the congeniality, please remember that he is asking the committee for approval of his plans, not the other way around. In his outstanding letter to Ms. Webb and Ms. Trager dated 8/3/2020, Garrett Stover of the Pascama Conservation Trust highlighted many aspects of the zoning ordinance and master plan that should be considered regarding the proposed development. While I will not expound upon the points raised in his letter, I would like to state that I appreciate and endorse their questions and concerns. Thank you very much for your time and consideration on this matter. Sincerely, Chris Cleveland. So a lot of information in there, and I think, Rob, you had gotten those letters when they first came out. I don't know if there's anything in there that you want to add to or respond to, or, or if you feel like you've already addressed that.
I think generally, the land trust letter and the discussion for permanently protecting the, the rest of the property is consistent with Mr., I'm sorry, Mrs. Slayer's comments about protecting the remaining open space. So I, I think that, you know, it's all consistent. I do understand the other comments, but, and, but if any way, to, to the abutter who wrote that letter, if any way I ever come across as presumptuous, I apologize. I do a lot of these meetings, and I'm sure there's multiple Freudian slips. In my mind, I'm hoping that all of these projects get approved, but I understand there's a process, and I do respect the process, so I apologize if I, if I said something in a manner that was presumptuous.
Thanks, Rob. Planning board members, any other comments or questions at this point?
I have one, Jeff. Mostly for, I'm sorry, for Jesse, mostly for Jeff. So I've been, during, while Jeff was, Jesse was reading those, sorry, those letters, I was trying to find the site on our planning board site that has the Pascama Trust for the public to read the, all the attachments and whatnot. I can't find the folder that has for this project. Is it possible for you to put a link into our Zoom meeting for the attendees who'd like to come on and look at more information and read some of these letters?
Yeah, I, I think you asked, someone asked me to do that last time, and I, we're, you know, we're shy about using the chat. I'm going to try it, though. It should pop up, oh, no, hold on.
Were you just hearing it, Jeff, from, from the city?
Yeah, I'll do that, too. I mean, because that's where, it's a good, you know, there's, everyone comes into these processes at different points in time, and, and, you know, this is an area of East Hampton that has not seen a lot of development proposals, so I, if you bear with me for one moment, I think, and I did push something on Facebook, it was a little late today, but, you know, right now, all the city meetings are available on Zoom, which is a, it's, it's more accessible than ever, although we're still really finding that people still don't really know how to navigate the website. But I'm going to share this, and it's really hard to share and talk, but my screen gets all captured with other things.
No, that's fine.
Your, your link in the chat works fine, Jeff. I'm going to click on that, and it takes me right to that page.
I would say, to be brief, the most important thing is to go to Planning Board, and, and if you can find the Planning Board, then it's a couple clicks, and you, you have to go to Forms and Documents, and then there's this page here that's just screen sharing, which is 2020 Planning Board Applications. And so, once you're in the, once you're in.
That's the weird thing. That's not how my, my view looks of this, of this page.
Yeah, that's, it might be strange, because then, you know, I have them by name here, by address, and on the screen share, it's 60, I think the address is wrong, it should be 69, but then you're clicking in, and this is where, you know, when we went to Zoom, you know, my concerted effort had been to make sure that up until four o'clock today, you know, the items that we got today are up here as well. So I'm, I'm going to try and, as hard as I can to get the information up and available. So it is there.
I, I was just able to click through. Chris, I, I am notoriously incompetent at finding my way through the city's website, and I can never find things when I need to, but that one actually happened seamlessly for me when I just did what Jeff told me. Maybe you're blocked from certain websites on the city.
Maybe, because I go to Forms and Documents, I have, oh, there it is. Heck, so it's, I went to, okay, never mind.
Okay. Any other, Mr. Zarvis, please?
With regard to rescheduling this hearing, the next meeting, what do we have in mind for a date?
So I think we discussed October 6, which would be back on our regularly scheduled, the fantasy land of two meetings a month.
Is that the first item on the agenda?
It would be. The only question I have before we take a motion to continue is, do we want to schedule a site visit now and, and do it that way, Jeff? Does that make the most sense? I don't know. I don't know if Rob has the ability, Robert, do you need to talk to anyone else before you schedule something, or can you?
Everything is laid out. We'll, we'll accommodate the planning board's schedule.
Okay.
I would love a Thursday night if it was possible.
That's fine, we just have to make it as early as possible, because the sun, it, sunset's around six now.
Yeah.
I can try to get off of work a little bit early, maybe sometime around five.
Are, are we thinking this Friday, this Thursday, the 17th? Is that too quick for people? Rob, are you capable of getting there for the 17th at five?
Um, I am now.
Any other planning board members have issues with the 17th at five? Okay, so we'll try to do a site visit the 17th at five. Anything else?
It was too easy.
I know it was. I'm sure it'll go horribly wrong, James, don't worry. Jeff, anything you need to do on this before we get a motion to continue to the 6th?
Well, the only thing about this Thursday is that technically, so the way the, the site visits get handled, a variety of different ways, it really depends on where you are, but, you know, historically, when we set one of these, we do publish them as a public meeting.
Yeah.
And I don't think.
I knew it was too easy.
I don't think we're going to achieve the public meeting notice requirement for that, so.
How about the 24th? Would that work for people?
We do Friday, this coming Friday, the 18th?
The 18th would work for me.
Yeah, I can pull Friday.
All right, Rob's backing out now.
Yes, my wife's going to kill me if I schedule, I'm supposed to be somewhere, I apologize.
The 25th also works. Is that what we said, the 25th? Yeah.
The 24th will be Thursday.
24th, I meant, 24th.
Yeah. 24th at five?
I might go work.
Rob, just for the record, it's my wife's birthday right now, and I'm.
Oh, sorry.
And I told you, our anniversary was in earlier Tuesday, so.
You got to wish her happy birthday, and, and.
Yes, happy birthday.
All right, so the 24th, 24th at five works for everyone? Okay.
I motion to continue the special permit for Cynthia Stupler. Uh, let's see, 69 and 73 Loudville Road, map 139 parcel 11, map 140 parcels 28 and 29 in the R-35 zoning district to October 6 at 6:00 p.m.
I'll second that.
All right, so voting to continue. All right, so voting to continue to October 6. James?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Harry?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
And I am an aye. All right, so anyone who's listening or watching this in the intervening weeks, the next time we will reconvene on this will be October 6, although we will have a site visit on September 24. James?
It might be a good idea, and there's not too many people left that I can see in chat here, but just to kind of state how we handle site visits, so that the expectations are understood.
Yeah, it's not a bad idea. So when we do a site visit, there's really not any deliberation or discussion. It's basically, you know, Rob, in this case, can show us around. Most of us have done a site visit already. So it, it will be more of sort of passive observing and not a time for a public comment or things like that. So if members of the public want to attend, we can certainly handle that. But it's not going to be a, a hearing off-site. It's just going to be a chance for us to walk the site and, and look at some of this stuff. Thank you, James.
I motion to adjourn.
Someone's got to second that, please.
Oh, I'll second it, sorry.
All right. Motion to adjourn. James?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Harry?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Thank you all again, and members of the public for chiming in, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, you guys.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye.